Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of August 8, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, Steve. For the folks at home, I'm gonna pan on the big screen there so they can take a look at the agenda items for this evening. Okay, very good. We start out the first meeting of the month always with the supervisor's report. This is a monthly statement ending July 31, 2017. We open the period with a balance of $5,849,658.42, receipts of $800,978.74, dispersments of $940,245.19, leaving an ending balance of $5,710,391.97. And Harry, I know you're gonna ask me, so the CM Community Preservation Fund balance...
Looked at it already.
You looked at it already? And you see that we had receipts in July of $31,600. I just received today in the mail the check for the month of July. And that also is $31,000 and change. So we'll be up to $873,000 at the end of August for that balance. Okay, and if there are no questions about the supervisor's report, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a few budget adjustments prepared by our bookkeeper Ann Conway that are attached, as well as the bank statements. Some of them relate to grant monies coming in and out or allocations. Nothing of much significance. There was a request from Hank to use $10,000 of his fund balance for the water district. Okay, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustment.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
And here you see the request from Hank. Transfer the fund from the fund balance on reserve to facilities improvement. And we are going out to bed for water control work. Then he needs the funds moved over. So we've accomplished that by approving the budget adjustments. And it's time for the clerk's reports to McCann.
Town clerk, month reports for July 2017. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for the spade immunity program, $48. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $135. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $208.80 for a total state, county, and local revenue of $1,910.10. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. I also have two abstracts tonight. One is from May. These are vouchers number 21958 through 22068. And the total abstract was $113,620.49. And I certify that those vouchers were processed in the month of May and they are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved by payment by the town board. We also have July of 2017. These are vouchers 22069 through 22178 for a total abstract of $113,323.99. And they were processed in the month of June and they are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board. And that's my report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
A lot of activity related to license, I suspect, yes?
This coming month, it'll reflect, yeah. Supporting licenses went on sale.
Yep. Very good. Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion to accept the clerk's report.
Sound.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will move into announcements. I just have a couple. Same as last meeting. Thank you all for your patience with the delay in moving up and down Route 9 associated with the sidewalk project. It's a project three years in the making that is coming to fruition and is scheduled to be completed September 19. So by the time you see this at home, you'll have about five weeks left. We may have a little bit of landscaping work to be done after that, but things are moving right along. And hopefully, you've noticed, if you had the opportunity, just what a nice amenity we will have at the end of the day when the project is finished. So we thank you again for your patience. The second announcement I have relates to the town board meeting schedule. It is an election year. And so primary day is Tuesday, September 12, which is also the day that we are scheduled to have our first meeting in September. And as a reminder, unfortunately, right now in Dutchess County, we are one of those counties where primary voting hours are from only noon until 9:00 PM. Town Hall here is one of the polling sites. And so we will be rescheduling that meeting. I think I sent an email out a while ago asking you all if you could check your calendars to see if the 14th might work. That's a Thursday. I know it's unusual for us to have a meeting on the Thursday, but the following day, we have both the ZBA and CAC having meetings. So does that work? How does that work for our attorney that night? You're checking your schedule.
I am.
All right, well, let's, we'll deal with this at the end, conclusion of the meeting. But our September 12 meeting will be rescheduled to another date to provide for the primary. And those are the announcements that I have. Does anybody else have any announcements they would like to make?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
People in town should know that last weekend, one of our town councilmen was on a weekend trip golfing at Stratton Mountain. And he came back with the equivalent of a gold medal. He had a hole in one. So when you see him on the street, you have to give him a pat on the back.
Very good. Okay.
Lucky shot.
Yes.
Very good. Congratulations, Bill.
Such as it is.
Would you like us to draft a proclamation for you?
No.
Okay, good.
Just let it go with that.
I think you should, Robert.
I didn't want taxpayer funds to go to the paper. But congratulations, yes. I know, I know how exciting that could be. Very good. So we have a public comment period. Would anybody like to make some public comments? Linda, you've got your hand raised. Please go right ahead.
Firstly, I'd like to congratulate Teresa for her wonderful flower designs around the building and in the back where the new tree is and the grassing area and the front where, you know, people come to come into the building. So it's nice and colorful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It makes it look homing instead of institutional. My other thing is that you had a special meeting on the 4th in which you discussed natural resources and saving them. And you only included soil and water. So I was hoping that you would also include air. Air is a natural resource that we need to protect. So please give that consideration.
Okay. Very good. Next, Madam Euston.
Lori Euston, I am the interim chair of the Conservation Advisory Council, three years now.
I think we could finalize. I didn't realize you were interim. Okay, I think we could finalize that.
No doubt there.
Let me talk to the person here right soon.
So Daisy's been doing various things over the last few years and a lot of focus has been on energy issues and different grants. And we are, you know, doing our thing to prevent climate change. But we are really realizing that we can't prevent what's happening and we need to adapt and become more resilient. So when I saw the notice about the moratorium on the agenda for today for large-scale commercial extraction, it reminded me of the important job we have yet to do, which is we need to make sure that our soil, our trees, and our water are here in Red Hook to do the jobs they need to do. Ecosystem services that they provide are invaluable and we don't want to lose them to, you know, large commercial external forces. So we look forward on the CAC to helping out, to figure this thing out. I know we should have been doing it a long time ago, but these gradual disasters are hard to fit in. So here we go.
Thank you, Lori. Anyone else like to make some comments?
I'll come along with her. You haven't said that when they complete the sidewalk, that there'll be 50 trees and shrubs planted. And the tree preservation committee reviewed that. And if we feel it's necessary, we're gonna be planting more. So you'll have your trees.
Very good. Ann, did you wanna make some comments? No? Okay. Yes? Okay.
Just briefly, I'm Ann Rubin, former CAC member. I commented to Lori this afternoon the aquifer protection overlay about which there has been some discussion over the years. In the area of water mining, one of the prohibited uses is in fact water mining and they protect against that by having a parcel-by-parcel requirement in so that the overlay is divided into zones. So there are more critical zones.
Oh, so overlay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's already adopted by the Town of Amenea. So there are different zones according to how critical the resource is. And in the more critical zones, any land use would be prohibited if the water withdrawal is larger than the parcel's natural recharge. It's enforced by a town hydrogeologist. A town hydrogeologist reviews any land use proposals on that basis. There are other criteria, but that's an important one. And so they don't have to say, "We don't allow water mining." And it's something to consider. I remember some years back when the town board was looking at language related to other extractive industrial uses. And it was, I think, proposed by town board member Bill O'Neill at that time that a moratorium might not always be the way to go in terms of expense and effectiveness. And for that particular application, for those industrial extractive land uses, there was a different approach. We had, I believe it was George Rodenhausen who wrote the language, was it? Or was it you?
Victoria.
Or Victoria, who wrote basically language describing those particular land uses as entirely unsuitable for the Town of Red Hook. And it did withstand the challenge because there were other towns, right, that had that?
You're referring to when we did the fracking, the tree fracking?
Yeah. So just a thought.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any more comments, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you all very much for your thoughts. We're gonna quickly go through our agenda, hopefully, this evening. The first item is a resolution to consent. We received correspondence from engineers working for the Red Hook Central School District. There is a proposal that is going to be placed on the ballot to add a high school auditorium to the Red Hook Central High. My understanding is that there's state funding for that. There was just an event maybe a month ago or so with our Assemblyman Cahill, who secured another $3.5 million for that project. There will be some portion, small portion, that the Red Hook residents, voters will be asked to vote upon for the project. And there is secret work involved with that project. And they are, as a matter of courtesy, sending to us for our review and consent the lead agency request. And given that the property lies wholly within Red Hook Village, it seems to me that we certainly would not want to assert any authority over the secret review for that project. You have in your packets, I've given you both the rendering that I was sent, as well as the secret documents. And I'm sure folks have, you know, plenty of questions about the project. Tonight, we're just here to decide whether or not we will consent to the school district being the lead agency in the review. Are there any questions about that? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number...
Forty-five.
Forty-five, dated August 8. It's a resolution consenting to Red Hook Central School District Board of Education as lead agency for the addition and renovations to the Red Hook Central School District. And they are proposing to conduct an improvement project that will include an approximately 16,000-square-foot auditorium addition, site work, and building renovations to the existing Red Hook High School, the project. And whereas the Board of Ed has preliminarily determined that the project is considered to be an unlisted action under SECR, and a short EAF has been prepared in connection with the project, now therefore be resolved that the town board of the Town of Red Hook hereby consents to the Red Hook Central School District Board of Education as lead agency for the project in iso mood.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The second item on the agenda is, as you know, at our previous meeting, we authorized the attorneys to prepare a brief, sorry, our engineers to prepare a brief report summarizing for the lighting district. Again, as a reminder for the folks at home, the town is pursuing or replacing our street lights, both for the general account and for our lighting district, with LED lights. And we have been working for some time now with the Mid Hudson Streetlight Consortium to develop a proposal. And this very brief report, which is available for the public at the clerk's office, summarizes essentially what the project calls for, which is swapping out of the lights for LEDs. We will have them installed. We will have a company to maintain them. And the taxpayers and the folks in the lighting districts will be saving a great deal of money. The cost of operating the system will be approximately one-third of the existing annual expense associated with maintaining the street lights. And so this report, which was prepared by engineers for a cost of $1,800, summarizes all of the main points that any of the folks in the lighting district would like to see. And so what I'd like to do is entertain this resolution, which calls for a public hearing on August 23, our next meeting date, for the LED replacement project. And who has a pair of lungs that would like to read this resolution? Sarah, could I impose upon you?
Can do my best.
Okay, forty-six, I believe it is.
Yeah, so Town Resolution, Town of Red Hook Resolution Number 46, dated August 8. Resolution in order calling for a public hearing to be held on August 23, 2017 at...
About 7:35.
7:35 PM regarding increase and improvement of facilities of its consolidated lighting district in the Town of Red Hook, County of Dutchess, State of New York. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook in Dutchess County, on behalf of its consolidated lighting district in the town, requested Crawford and Associates Engineering to prepare a report for the increase and improvement of facilities of the consolidated lighting district, consisting of acquisition of streetlight facilities, including fixtures and arms from Central Hudson, replacing the fixtures with light-emitting diode LED equivalents, and including land or rights and land for original furnishings, equipment, machinery, and apparatus required therefore. And pursuant to the direction of the town board and the engineers have completed and filed with the town board such report for the increase and improvement of facilities of the consolidated lighting district entitled "Report for the Town of Red Hook Proposed Increase and Improvement of Facilities for Existing Lighting District (LED Lighting)" and the engineers have estimated the total cost thereof not to exceed $93,226.92. And whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act SECR, the town board has determined that the proposed increase and improvement of facilities of the consolidated lighting district is best described as a local legislative decision concerning routine administration and management under the SECR and constitutes type 2 action, which will not have a significant effect on the environment, now therefore be it resolved by the town board as follows. A public hearing shall be held at Town Hall, as previously stated, on August 23, 2017, at 7:35 PM to consider the said increase and improvement of facilities of the lighting district and to hear all persons interested in the subject thereof concerning the same and for such other action on the part of the town board with relation thereto as may be required by law. And the town clerk is authorized and directed to publish notice of the said public hearing and the resolution will take effect immediately in iso mood.
Thank you, Sarah.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. For discussion, just for the folks at home, under conservative assumptions made in the report, we'll be saving the users in the lighting district over the period of the 15 years, which these lights are expected to last in initial installation, over a couple hundred thousand dollars. So once again, we're doing our best to lower our energy use and provide savings to our users and taxpayers. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. The motion is, the resolution is approved. Number three is a discussion and potentially a resolution to apply to the New York State Department of Transportation Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Program. For quite some time now, almost two years, I've been talking with folks, seniors in particular in the community, about trying to provide better transportation connections for them. You know, we have this wonderful Red Hook Commons Project that the previous supervisor was very instrumental in making reality. It does provide some challenges for them to get around to the rest of our community. There are seniors in other locations as well that need assistance getting around. And there are individuals with enhanced challenges that need to get around town. And in discussions with senior services committees members and with Nick Asenzo, who has a foundation and is a former teacher here at the Red Hook School District, we are contemplating applying for this grant, which would allow us to purchase two electric, of course, electric vans. They are passenger vans and they can be outfitted, two of them. They can be outfitted with a wheelchair accessible back. It will lift the wheelchair into the van itself. It's a 12- or 14-passenger van without the wheelchair. With the wheelchair, it's a little less, I believe it's eight. And so there is this grant opportunity. Unfortunately, like it seems every grant we're going for, the deadline is quickly approaching. It's August 21. There's a 20% match, which Nick has essentially assured us that they would provide that match, that there would be no cost to the taxpayers. Obviously, once those vans are purchased, we would need volunteers to drive them around. There are a lot of able-bodied, let's just say, mature individuals like myself, who, you know, perhaps we could ask to volunteer and help out their neighbors to do so. So I put it to you whether or not it's something you think we should go out for this grant for. Any questions?
Is there any conflict with any county program for senior citizens for transportation?
Well, we did have Dial-Ride here. For some reason, it wasn't very successful. And I, you know, just remember over the years that the rider shift was quite low. Now, you know, things have changed. The needs, maybe with Dial-Ride, I think folks were getting rides occasionally to a doctor or to the grocery store or whatever. But now we have a community center that is trying to gear a lot of programs towards seniors. So we maybe have a different level of need or interest. So I know this is something that has been talked about in the senior services committee for some time and something that, you know, I think our community, as we all are getting a little bit, right, we might need some assistance getting around town.
Could we get something in writing from the senior services committee about this project?
Like an endorsement or something?
We get an endorsement, we can. Unfortunately, the grant is due two days before our next town board meeting. So, but we can certainly ask them for something in the meantime, yeah. Absolutely. I think their minutes reflect also that they discuss this topic, not necessarily this specific grant. Ann is the secretary of the senior services.
I don't know if I can make a comment here?
Yeah. Sure.
Ann Rubin, once again, secretary to the Town of Red Hook Senior Services Committee. Regarding Dial-Ride, I was informed by the Chair, Andrew Kerr, and other longstanding senior services committee members that the problem was it was never available when people needed it. So everyone was going out and looking for other alternatives. It was sort of a vicious cycle downward, that it wasn't available when people needed it, so it wasn't getting used, and so it was even less available, and so on. And I think it would be a very good idea for senior services input, AARP input, maybe some input from Brian Jones, because I think something like this can work. But it does have to be carefully managed so that it's being used in the way it was intended. Transportation up here is a very difficult issue because you don't have the density that you have in the city of Poughkeepsie, for example.
It might be helpful if we could get something in writing from your committee that would show exactly how you would propose to use the vehicles, but the needs.
We can do that. We are happy to do that. I will let the town board know that the Town of Red Hook Senior Services Committee adjourns for July and August. So we will not be having another meeting until the last Wednesday of September.
We have many months to design the program, how it would work. Um, we won't hear back from this uh grant application for several months. We're talking about something for twenty-eighteen.
I'll add one final thing. Um, I don't know who's gonna be writing the grant, but I will offer my services for assistance on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, I think we'll we'll pick you up on that.
Now, this suggests twenty percent would be fifty thousand dollar match.
That's right, um.
And if I remember correctly, I I was uh, that was, I I was involved somewhat when that, when that, the only way to say it, it fell apart. And we were, we were working with Reinbeck, there was a difficulty in getting drivers. There was a difficulty in in establishing a route to get the people to where they wanted to go. And 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 you're right, it fell apart.
Right. Um, just relative to the twenty percent, again, Harry. Um, this not-for-profit foundation is pledging to provide that twenty percent. So there will be no cost to the taxpayers for the acquisition of the van.
So I'm saying, if I might add one last thing. Nick Asensio, Nick Asensio came to our committee meeting in January of twenty-sixteen, and he gave a presentation about how his foundation works. So not only do they provide funds and uh material support in that sense, financial support, but he has, all of his former students are ambassadors. And they are people who have pledged to work with the organizations that his his foundation is supporting. So that is another resource that the town would have. Um, we would have one of his ambassadors helping us research it and 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 plan it out, because as as Harry said, and as we have spoken about on a number of occasions in Senior Services Committee meetings, it 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 can work, but it has to be implemented very carefully.
And I know um a good example was when the community center had their open house um several months ago, we were getting calls from people in the Red Hook Commons, can you, can you go get us a van so we can get over there? And um it may seem to folks that it's easy for everyone to walk those eight or ten blocks or whatever that is. But for some folks, it's a real challenge, so. Um, with with your support, and we'll see if we get the grant. I mean, obviously, it's very competitive funding. I think it's twenty-eight million dollars being allocated across uh the state. Um, but it seems like a worthwhile initiative, yeah.
Yep, good idea.
All right, very good, um.
Can I just ask one question? Does the town purchase the vans under this grant, does the town own them? How does it work?
Yes, the town would own them, yeah.
Yeah, so there are a lot of, I'll just say, I mean, I'm in favor of this. And just as an initial, let's try to get the grant. But it does bring up a lot of questions as far as like, you know, how we maintain them, who will drive. You know, there's gonna be a lot of things we'd have to work out if we're so lucky to get the grant. But I I think we should pursue it. But as soon as we find out if we got it, then we're gonna have to really figure out a lot of these policy questions about how we use it.
And our charging stations are up and running. If you have an electric car and find yourself um in Town Hall for any reason, we we welcome you coming here. Folks are charging their cars here, and we're all set up if we were to have those two vans, that we could charge them. And uh that cost is being covered by New York State for the first couple of years, so. Okay, very good. So uh we have Resolution Number Forty-seven. Okay, very good. Um, Bill, could I impose upon your hole-in-one lungs to uh read the Resolution Number Forty-seven?
Resolution Number Forty-seven dated August eighth, two thousand seventeen, authorizing submission of an application for a grant regarding enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities program. Whereas the Town of Red Hook is caused to be prepared an application to New York State D O T for a grant regarding enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities program. And whereas it is in the best interest of the Town of Red Hook to submit the grant application for the acquisition of two electric vehicle vans for transporting senior citizens and mobility-challenged individuals. And whereas the maximum amount of the grant to be applied for by the town is up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with a twenty percent match proposed to be funded by a local not-for-profit. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook that we authorize the supervisor in his absence, the deputy supervisor, to execute and submit the grant application for a maximum estimated cost of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the acquisition of two E V vans with a twenty percent match to be provided by a not-for-profit. And that the officers, employees, and agents of the town are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things as may be necessary or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or agent acting, desirable and proper to effect the purposes of the foregoing resolution, which would shall, shall take effect immediately. And I so move.
Thank you very much, Bill. I'd like to second your resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. And I, uh, can I beg your pardon for a moment? I meant to show at least a sketch of the Red Hook High School auditorium proposal for the folks at home, because I know that's gonna be the one question folks are gonna have, is where is that auditorium going? And so Steve, I don't know if you can capture that?
Yeah.
You got it, okay? So the high school uh is proposing, the board of that is proposing to put it on the eastern, the southeastern corner, the end addition. And of course, the high school doesn't really look like that, um, but that's a rendering. Yeah?
Maybe it should be the high school way.
I think it looks, it looks very modern, doesn't it? With the blue and the white, but uh. So I'm sure we'll find out in the ensuing months uh more about the project, and then we'll all get to decide if we think it's a worthwhile initiative, um, and compare it to the costs, so. Very good, all right. We can move on to the fourth item in the agenda. And this, um. Uh, I always got something here. Um, Harry, would you uh like to begin the discussion? I know this is an idea of yours, I don't know if you wanted to lead off on this?
I don't know, um, you want me to read the resolution?
No, no, but basically, maybe just explain the the purpose of the the agenda item?
The the purpose of the agenda item is is to protect and to protect the natural resources of the town and and so that we don't, we don't lose those resources to the to the future of the of the municipality, the resources being being the soils that we have, and we have great soils. We have an aquifer that is par-excellent. Um, and that that aquifer, there have been some some efforts to to use uh the, our water resources for commercial purposes outside the town. And uh what's paramount in the in the future is that those resources be kept available for those of us who live in the town now and in the future. So uh, um, this is, this is intended to to um to prepare some legal, legal authority to uh to deal with the uh the use of that, of those, of those materials um in in the interest of preservation for for the town. And and water in particular is one that is uh very critical. Farmers cannot operate without them, and nor can can we as people live here without the water that we have. And I think we have one of the best aquifers in anywhere, including all of the, all of the valley here. So uh, that that's the purpose of this pro- of this proposal.
Okay, and um what what the the draft law will do is give us time to create reasonable regulations regarding those natural resources. When we took a look at, for example, for the folks at home, um, the collection of spring waters and operation of associated bottling works, we saw that essentially there was no limitation to the amount of water that could be extracted. Um, it just needed to fall within the R D three district and beyond property that was a minimum of five acres. Um, there were some uh open space requirements associated with it, but there was no limitation on the amount of water that could be um collected and sold off-site. Um, so this will give us time for that. Um, with regard to soil mining, um, we have one of the loosest language on the code that our code has, uh, relative to this important topic. You know, the uh folks here in Red Hook have spent a great deal of effort and in some cases dollars protecting our farmlands. Um, but when it comes to actually protecting the soils on those farms, we have uh very little restriction. In fact, we don't even define soil mining as a use other than extracting and removing a thousand tons uh during the course of a twelve-month period. And just to give you an idea of what that might be, a very large truckload of twelve, fourteen cubic yards. Um, you could have eighty of those come to a particular farm property and remove soils each and every year, and you wouldn't be required to even go through a special permit process. It's just um allowed as of right, and it's allowed as of right on every single parcel um within our township, because we define soil mining as um being allowed over that threshold and in the uh R D three uh districts. So what we wanna do is just make sure that we have um some time to create some reasonable regulations with regard to these important natural resources. At the same time, um, make sure that we are allowing all of our um uh site contractors and certainly our existing uh water collection um business that uh is occurring now in the town, um, the ability to operate at um legal level that is currently um transpiring at this time. So um we expect that the draft, the way it is crafted, um, we hope will have um no impact on any businesses that are currently conducting these activities. Um, so what we are looking to do is reach out to some of those folks and make sure that the thresholds that we've uh set here in this draft accomplish that goal, allow everyone to continue to work, um, while we get the time that we need to to put in these reasonable uh regulations. So we can do that between now and our next meeting. We could call if you so uh desire for a public hearing on this draft law. Um, also for our next meeting, August twenty-third. And uh in the meantime, get some input from folks um on this draft and uh proceed from there. What do you think, Harry? Does that work?
Sure.
All right, Sarah?
Yeah, I think so, just some of the people here tonight brought up some ideas about what we could have in place in the future. And so that, this is sort of a temporary stopgap measure to give us time to figure out what those would be. And I think some of the things you brought up are great ideas, like the aquifer overlay we should certainly look at, and there's a lot of other things. And so, once we have the process started, we'll be reaching out to the C A C, I'm sure, and many other, you know, anybody who has ideas about what we need to have in place to figure out what we can, what we can do.
And we've already been checking in with the help of um our zoning folks, um, what other municipalities have um done with their zoning and creating thresholds. For example, you need a special mining permit in nearby townships if you're doing more than a hundred cubic yards, a cubic yard being approximately a ton. Um, and here in the town of Red Hook, we're ten times that as far as a threshold. So um clearly, other municipalities have done some work in this area, and we can probably benefit from um the work that they've already done, so. Any other thoughts?
I have two. Uh, one is about the timing, twelve months versus six months. Is that uh on the recommendation of our planner or attorney for the town or what?
One second question.
Hmm?
It was a crest I understood from the board that was, wanted some time to study it.
For twelve months?
That wanted some time to study.
Do we need that much time, or do we just need six months?
I think it's more realistic to have the twelve months. You know, we're talking about stuff that requires a fair amount of science, and we also need to understand. You know, so we need to get a lot of input, I think.
And the second thing is. We already, we already have a fair amount of knowledge based on the, on the, the water study we we did with, we did, you know, the Centers of Marine Space and then for the T N D and whatever. Um, but uh I would think we can get it done in a lot less than a year. But on the other hand, it may be just easier to say we have, we have a year, but but we will, we will move at this, and at flank speed, in any case.
Well, if we had certain measures in place before the twelve months was over, I mean, we can pass a lot.
Absolutely.
You know, like if, let's say, the overlay, which has already been accomplished in another town, we take a look at it, it seems to fit pretty much, you know, we tweak it here and there, and then we're ready to go on it. I mean, we can do those things, you know, it's just sort of, it's a, you know, it's a period of time that we're guessing we're going to need, so then we just start working as soon as we have it in place, so.
Well, Robert, I'd like to know, what brought this whole subject down? Tonight is the first I've heard about this. Do we feel the pressure? Because I'm, you know, I'm a person that is strongly against moratoriums, and I would never vote in favor of a moratorium.
Okay.
If you feel our present zoning doesn't have enough control for these loosely defined extractive operations that you've talked about, then fine, you know, then then we should work on a zoning change and, you know, have a public hearing on that. But I would never be in favor of a moratorium. This is the first I've even heard about this topic or subject. So I'd like to, do you feel that there's pressure on us at the present time? Why all sudden, you know, tonight we have to discuss having a moratorium?
Um, I think there is. I think there are a couple of applications. This was a suggestion, by the way, of Councilman Colgan. And I think there are a couple of applications um that may be coming our way that um unfortunately put us in a very vulnerable situation. There are no limitations associated with.
I mean, what are these applications? Obviously, you, if you're talking about, we should be open and discuss what you feel is coming before us.
Um, sure, well, we have, we have one application um for water collection in front of the planning board, which is uh an existing uh business, which, you know, certainly we tried to write into uh this moratorium an exemption for that application, you know, with some limitations applied to that. Um, there's unfortunately in our code, um, there is, there is no limit to the amount of water that can be uh collected and sold off of a property here in the town of Red Hook. And I don't think necessarily that's wise. Um, as far as um soil mining and other things, um, yeah, there are potentially some, some applications coming in that put us at risk, so.
I would like to see these applications, but as I said, I personally would never be in favor of having a moratorium, because I, you know, you've given us a few comments and thoughts tonight, but I would like to, you know, it's not enough for me to vote in favor of a moratorium.
Okay, well, this is, tonight we're just entertaining a public hearing to get more input from folks.
I I understand that, but I, you know.
All right, Harry, would you like to make that motion? To uh set, set the public hearing for August twenty-third? It's Resolution Number Forty-eight, dated August eighth.
Um, Town of Red Hook Resolution Number which?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Establishing a date.
August, August eighth of two thousand seventeen, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook of Local Law Number C, proposed of two thousand seventeen. Whereas a proposed, proposed form of Local Law Number C uh of two thousand seventeen entitled a local law placing a twelve-month moratorium on large-scale commercial extractive operations in the town of Red Hook has been submitted to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook. And whereas pursuant to Section two thirty-nine dash M of the General Municipal Law, proposed amendments to the zoning law may be referred to the Department of Planning and Development for its review and report thereon. Whereas the proposed local law constitutes a type-two action for purposes of the State Environmental Quality Review. of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook by the favorable vote of not less than a majority of all of the members of the board as follows. When the town board of the town of Red Hook should hold a public hearing on August twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty-five?
No, we already have one there. How about seven forty-five for that one?
Seven forty-five at the Town Hall, seventy-three forty South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law and at which time and place the town board may determine whether to adopt the proposed local law. The town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman, the official newspaper of said town, on and before August thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, which is not less than ten calendar days prior to the date of said public hearing. The town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to refer a copy of local law C proposed of two thousand seventeen to the planning board for a report and recommendation herein therein pursuant to section one three forty-three dash one forty-one of the zoning law. The town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to refer a copy of local law C proposed of two thousand seventeen to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for a report and recommendation thereon pursuant to section, section two thirty-nine M of the general municipal law. The town clerk is hereby authorized and direct to send notice of said public hearing to the clerks of adjacent municipalities and so move.
Thank you, Harry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion?
Well, does this resolution also though sue, and you'll have a copy of this proposed law on the website?
Yeah, we can put it on-
Put it on the website.
As I say, specifically in the resolution. It should be available for everybody to put on the website to see what it is that's going to be the subject of that public hearing.
Yeah, we can do that. Any further discussion? I would just like to add that our special meeting called last week that we discussed that we did not want the moratorium to affect existing operations and that we wanted to craft the draft of this law in such a way that it would both protect the community and allow existing activities to continue to be conducted. And so we'll be looking for feedback to make sure we have the right thresholds or whether or not we need to tweak them in order to accomplish that goal. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jen?
I'm opposed to that.
Okay, that's a name. Thank you very much. The resolution passes. Okay, item number five on the agenda is we need to constitute a few committees so that we can further the work of grants. So we have our LWRP, our Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan Update Grant. So that has now been cleared through the state. So we need to constitute a committee with members. I'm sure we'd like to have membership from Trail, CAC, so on and so forth. Historic, since there's a lot of historic properties there. So what I'm asking you is to give some thought of who you think should be a membership, what size committee, what type of representation. The same holds true for the Clean Streets Advisory. We discussed this at a previous meeting. We'd like to obviously have our Highway Superintendent Trails and so on and so forth so that the work of the Clean Streets grant can begin.
Excuse me, Robert, is that Clean Streets or Complete Streets?
I'm sorry, Complete Streets. Yes, it's written as a Clean Street, so I'm just reading it.
I know, that's why.
Clean Streets is a good committee too, as somebody who's Clean Streets.
We should do that next.
It's, well, that is a spring event that we do, as you know, Teresa. So Complete Streets Advisory, thank you. And can you tell I've been here for too long today? So please give it some thought. I would really like us at our next meeting to have some ideas of what the membership and makeup of those committees will be so that we can, can continue that work. Right. We have just one more item, I think, on the agenda. And that is some correspondence, which is from the Land Use Law Center at Pace. So it's from Tiffany, our friend Tiffany over at Land Use. And she talks about how our community, community has been nominated to participate in the upcoming Land Use Leadership Alliance Training Program. LULA is the acronym in the fall of this year. And they give the dates. And it's about sustainable development techniques. And the program is a four-day course that is based on the train-the-trainer model. They talk about how they've had three thousand leaders since this program started back in nineteen ninety-five. The program is conducted by the staff. The program is offered free of charge. If we are interested in having our community participate, they would like us to nominate three to five individuals from our community participating. So that's November third, seventeenth, and December first. Sorry, October twentieth, November third, seventeenth, and December first. And it's in Poughkeepsie. So let's give some thought to that as well, whether we want to participate and who would like to.
And if I could have a little bit of your time?
Please.
At our last, last month, we discussed the need for a plow truck for this winter.
Yes.
And you all know that we're down to plow trucks. So we usually do a six route, a six-truck route. We now have a five-truck route. And there's always the danger that one of the trucks would break. And we have a four-truck route.
We usually do a six-truck route, in fact?
Yes, a six, six trucks.
I thought it was five trucks. It used to be six trucks.
It, it, it has always been six trucks. So we now only have five trucks. And this is just an updated quote from the manufacturer of the truck that we're looking at. And we need to think about this carefully because we are looking at winter with only five trucks on the road. And the potential of four trucks on the road if one of the trucks that we have breaks down. It's three and a half to four hours for a plow route right now. With five trucks, that'll extend probably at least an hour. We'll have drivers who are unfamiliar with other routes on the roads. Everybody knows their own route like the back of their hand, but if they have to take on other roads, they don't. So it adds more time. If you go to a four-truck scenario, you're going to add at least two more hours. Now, we had a really big blizzard in March and we were able to hang on. And we did very well with it. We didn't lose any trucks. Every truck got stuck, but we were able to pull them out with our own trucks. I just want you to think about this because it's a five-month lead time. I know that the financing is difficult for this, but it's not a want, it's a need. And I need some answers so that I know how to plan for the winter.
This isn't something you already did?
No.
It's something I already did? We, we, I brought it to the board's attention, but there has been no further discussion. And what this is, is the breakdown of all of the features of the truck. I gave you just the cover sheet.
I thought we agreed to buy that truck now.
No, we have had no discussion or agreement.
This was an additional truck. This is not the truck that we agreed to buy.
This is basically a year earlier than we had planned on replacing it.
Right. So we were supposed to get it in two thousand eighteen. If you order it now, you're not going to get it until two thousand eighteen. I don't know what the, the legalities or the logistics are, but it's a five-month lead time for a truck. So if we order it today, we won't have it on the lot five months from, till five months from now, at the earliest. So.
Well, I think we'll have, we'll have a lot of, we'll have black eyes if we don't have the roads cleared this winter. And if we go down by one truck, we, we are right at the cusp of, of the minimum of what we need now. And, and we, we used to have one more truck.
No, we always had six trucks with a couple small ones and a spare.
We had, we had another route a few years ago.
No.
We have one less. All right.
No, no, we didn't. I, I know where you're going with that, but one of the people drove a smaller truck and they moved into a bigger truck route.
The two were down, the one was used as spare parts and now both of them are essentially shot.
One was used as a spare truck in case one of our regular trucks broke. So the spare broke and a truck broke.
They were the same, naked model, were they not?
Both cracked frames, both irreparable, and both, you know, expensive to replace.
So they're off the road as of now.
Yeah, you can't drive.
But we replaced one of those two trucks.
No, we did not.
No. We bought a new truck that was on schedule. What we're trying to do is figure out to, to replace an older truck. So we-
No, no, we-
We bought a snowplow truck back not even a year ago. And with the same timing as our loader. So the loader was scheduled for this year. On the capital plan, and it should be important to distinguish, having a capital plan is a little bit like a wish list. You still have to find the financing in your budget. And so what Ann and I have been working on diligently for the last couple of weeks is the budget for twenty eighteen to figure out how we could purchase this truck. Hopefully, we'll have something for you soon.
I think it's critical that we have it by this snow season.
Well, Harry, you know, that's, that's probably going to be more, you know, that's not going to be up to us because it, it, it may take five months. It may take, you know, Teresa told us that one community waited a year when they were told to five months. It's a little bit out of our hand. What we're trying to do is to figure out how to juggle, you know, when the DB fund is, you know, we're already stressed, how to juggle more acquisition, more debt. So we'll, we'll get it figured out.
Well, we have, our, our debt has been very, we've been very careful with our, with our debt. And we've, and we've had, we've been able to, to ban these things for a few months until we converted, converted them to a bond and maintain the schedule of replacement of that equipment. And I'm, I'm really concerned about what can happen this winter when we're, when we're down, down a truck with, you know, you'll have extra days of school. It won't, it won't happen. There'll, there'll be many unintended consequences if we try to go into the snow season down, down, down from our normal routes.
Well, that's, that's what we're working on. That's what we're working on, is figuring out how to purchase. It's, at this point, it's, it's not so much weather. It's what is it going to look like, the acquisition of the truck, okay? And so we'll have a proposal very soon, within the week.
Okay, because in order to start the process then Ted would have to prepare the purchase order and post it all those ways.
I, I understand, but we have to follow the, the legal requirements.
Absolutely.
So if we're going to acquire that, we can't know how much.
But can we, can we approve it tonight so then, you know, you, you figure it out? Because we were going to start this a year from now anyway, but obviously the trucks that wasn't pre-shaped than we anticipated, so.
It's very important to under, to distinguish between a capital plan, which is-
I, I understand a lot of our questions, but-
Which is an, and a wish list and, and what fits into the budget. They don't always mesh that well. And so we're trying to get that square to fit into around all of this point, so.
We know that, but we can, you know, I, I think we, we shouldn't wait any longer because, you know, five months right now puts us in January if, you know.
There was, there's no, there's no way. We have to figure out how it fits into the budget. So that's why we've been working on the budget very early. We'll have something in the next week.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you the breakdown of exactly what I proposed at the last presentation for this vehicle so that you have all the information. I'll give a copy of this to Ted. It's an updated, this quote is good for thirty days. After thirty days, there could be an increase and there's definitely going to be a three to five percent increase in the coming year. Every year, they go up three to five percent, so.
This is an August first quote, right?
Yes. I can actually give you this one. Do you need one, Sue?
You just gave it to me.
Okay. We're back at that point where there's public comment. Is there any additional public comment? Linda?
I'm totally in favor of getting those vans. However, the idea that you're going to use volunteers to drive, I don't think that's going to work out for the grant. That's probably a negative. You probably should be considering some sort of part-time employee to make that grant fly. And if Ann needs additional help in reviewing, I'm offering my services. I've done a lot of grants, I was grant writer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Linda. Okay. Anything else, Ann?
So I have one more brief comment. The aquifer protection overlay as adopted by AMENIA is a piece of model ordinance designed to be easy and relatively inexpensive and quick for towns to adopt. That was the whole idea behind Russell developing this with DC Water and Wastewater Authority. And based on the research that I've done, I'm no expert, but I have read up a little bit on this. It ends up being more expensive and possibly opening up a municipality to more lawsuits if you take a piecemeal approach to water protection. It's better, and I don't know if you can verify that or not, it's better to come up with a plan that encompasses everything because otherwise you risk saying, well, we're protecting the aquifer this way or the water and soil this way, but there's a loophole, there's a hole. It's better to, even if it's a little harder at the beginning, I personally advocate for taking a more holistic approach in response to what Harry was saying. Rhinebeck has similar groundwater soils to ours. They were formed by a delta at the end of the last glacial age. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I never got to present. I did a lot of research on the geology of our aquifer and its information with lots of slides. I divided it from the presentation that I gave in two thousand eight because it was just too long. I have to see these. But if the town wants to consider, maybe I could dust that off. I, I, I haven't looked at it in years. Who knows if the file is still uncorrupted? But if I could get at it and the town wanted to sponsor some kind of presentation in order to educate people on the actual geology of our aquifer. When I did this research, I actually did discuss it with Russell Urban Meet because I wanted to be presenting information that was deemed correct or, you know, more correct by the scientific community. There's always a bit of dissension here and there, but these were basically widely accepted ideas that I incorporated. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Julia?
So I'm Julia Solomon. I serve on the Asperian Advisory Council. And I guess I just wanted to say that I am very much looking forward to the public hearing on the moratorium, but I think that some care should be taken in how that is presented to the public by the board and maybe the communications committee and our committee. I heard about it today and I was really startled. And I think moratorium is a scary word for people. And I guess I have some concern that if it goes out quickly or hastily or without enough framing, that it could really create a backlash that I think is probably more than, more than is warranted by, by the state of the conversation right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any other conversations?
Regarding your board date, I'm not available that date, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
Monday?
Okay. No, Monday is nine eleven. We generally don't meet on nine eleven and.
What about the Thursday?
That's what you were starting to-
That's the day you're not available on the fourteenth. Okay, well, we'll, we'll be rescheduling our September twelfth meeting. Unfortunately, we don't yet know what date it will be, but we will post it on the website and send an email and broadcast it out. Any other comments?
Yeah. Again, getting back to the drivers for those vans, because you're dealing with people with disabilities. The person has to be trained in how to handle the individual, the wording that they use. And if there's a health problem, that they're aware of what needs to be done. So using volunteers is not the best thing because you're going to have different people interacting. A lot of times volunteers don't show up and then, then you don't have a service that's reliable. And that's something that that group really needs is reliability to get from place to place.
Okay. Thank you very much, Linda. Any other comments? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I suppose. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all.